Jerk.
What's up, everybody? This is the poker coaching study session. Today we're gonna be looking at twenty five big blind V. Big blind defense against early positions. What do we do with deuces? I said we just call.
You call?
Then we.
Check fold.
Sounds like a plan. I know. Why is it so slow? Aim speed. And I know, is he calling?
And by calling. Defend by calling.
So.
Raising seems a little bit splashy here. So.
And by crying.
How far are we gonna go down with our pair? Like are we calling up the gen? If there's no spade. The nine is good, right?
Next thing here.
We can't leave most call box.
Oh, my goodness. It's an inside board. We don't need to do that kind of shenanigans on the sideboard. Okay. Makes sense.
Now if you pass, we have.
And now we can just check four.
Ah.
What do you have an ace?
No, he hit the king on the river. He had king queen.
Sorry, I have these stupid pop ups keep getting in my way.
Wonderful. Okay, just a check fold. On fire.
Yes, Darren.
A little.
Zero E D V defense though, right? We can, we don't have to defend this against people.
No.
Must be close, right? Must be close to the bottom by the tinder.
Let's fold against people.
Queen five is the bottom against the solver, I think.
Yep.
Call.
I called once. An eight. No.
Doesn't change anything.
At least we blocked them on colors, so.
Yeah.
Check and then. Then away. King is two for him. How does value bet this game? And then was it the spot where we could raise with the queen? What do you guys think? On the river? Say he goes for value with his little king jack as he should, right? He's a bit nitty checking back. Well, say he goes for value. King Jack is a pure check here. How? The river is a pretty good top pair and always.
What's going?
Say he had queen.
Ah, good, yeah, good, good.
Okay, so say you have queen jack, he goes for like five.
Bottom midland card, straights out there. Yes, the check here.
Then do we ever get to raise with the hand?
Hmm.
By. The queen. Oh, my goodness, look at this. So since the flush complete and we have the queen of the suit, although I would do it with the king and use of the suit as well. But it's really heavy on the queen. Yeah, you can raise bluff a value that one over there. Fancy. Is deuce. What do we do? Do we bet this guy or just call? So a little three bet? Oh, my goodness, what happened?
And the cookie jar.
I believe we got call. Ace queen. Wow. He has no respect for our three bets. King queen. Ever a three bet here? Three bet, call. I think it's just a call. Now, S P R is small. We have a strong hand. Where it gets a E P and he can probably connects well here, right? So. Both options are tempting, like raising and calling.
I like check raising small.
Are you not afraid to lose your fish?
Back to to go to five and five.
I'm gonna go that warm sunny yellow size, maybe with a little bit of orange.
You wanna go with the sun, the land of the sun? Oh, yeah.
I was going for the five point five, but still.
So at this S P R is still raising everything. Do we raise all of our sets?
I would say so, probably.
I could seven raising heavy.
I think it's just like you said, it's E P. His range is strong. He connects well. He's not folding much.
Yeah.
We raise. A lot of kings. Top pair very heavy. And then we raise some bottom pair. Uh blocks the sets of seven. Is that it? Must be, right?
Yeah.
Or are these? But no, it's even picking the one without the backdoor flush. But it's you, it's doing it a lot less without the backdoor flush, like you see clubs. Depends.
You notice that it, it, this one doesn't follow the uh top bottom rule as much. Um in the offsuit branch, the king seven raises more. Than the queen seven and in, 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 in the heuristic. Uh, king queen raises the most than then queen seven, then king seven, and that isn't the case here, although it is in the suited branch.
Yeah.
Doesn't break it by much, but it does break that heuristic.
Yeah. Alright. Jack nine, ten nine, jack ten. Well, these are the little bluffs with equity.
Ten eight.
Was there a ten eight?
I don't know. I was looking for ten eight. Maybe I, maybe we don't have.
No, ten eight.
No, we don't have it, so.
Oh, we have it. We just folded.
A little raise. Are we gonna be leaving much on low board here? Yeah. Okay. Yeah.
Reading small.
Yeah. On boards, on the usual boards.
And they can be as high as, they can be as high as an eight, right?
Four to eight.
As long as they're connected.
Uh, my mind it's seven.
Oh, no, sevens. Okay.
Here's an outlier.
Yeah, and eight, six, five, the, the most connected of them can do it, but.
And in my, in my mind.
Yeah, eights, eights, all the, all the connected eights do it a little bit, not much.
Eight connected with a flush draw.
I'll go do that now. I'll come back in a few minutes.
Alright.
Alright, thank you, Chris. What are you thinking, Louis? Easiest defend of your life. Click the button.
Thinking about raising. That's what he's thinking about. I like folding this in game.
Folding.
In, in game, I do, yeah.
I like three betting.
First solve of three betting.
That is exactly what we have. You have described our hand accurately, Louis.
We have, we have one card.
Three bet.
Yeah. We hold it better.
I like folding this in game.
Oh, my goodness. Did we just torch a quarter of the stack or? Ah, yeah, 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 yeah.
Yes, yes.
Ah, yeah, 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 feels bad. Are we gonna three bet here? No, man, we're hurt from the last hand. We'll never get to know three bet again. Oh.
My leading range.
Okay, so we probably doesn't have much. Got a deal. Is it better to raise or to call?
I would say mostly call, triple raise.
I don't know. Do we want to run into an over fair? That's, that's the question, right? We check raise this and then he calls then. Could be in a sticky situation.
Is it just a call?
Yeah, picking, yeah, for sure.
Am I, am I a big nit for wanting to fold?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's what you are, Greg.
I'm just a big nit.
Yeah.
Welcome to the.
It's a term of endearment, Greg. Don't, don't let him shame you.
I wanna, I wanna go half pot here.
So are the only reason why we're can.
I mean, it's just batch it crazy.
I just ate my cereal.
You took your cereal, the five comes. I think it's pretty good to lead here.
You got bad blockers, Louis.
I think since we didn't check raise the flop, I think we have to just check.
I mean, he was. He was leaving the flop five percent, so if there's five comes, I mean, it must be like, uh, he has too much a size. How many, how many streets do we need to get a side to fold?
I think it's a good card to lead. I just think you have bad blockers. I think there may be better combos.
Okay. Then. Oh, my goodness. How, how easy is it to play against us?
He had cereal.
He's got, he's got aces. He's raising his aces.
Yeah.
Games over first.
Fuck her eight is weedy.
Oh.
I don't think, do we, I don't think we have to defend this against under the gun, do we? Ten seven, offsuit?
Ten seven. Yeah, we do.
Maybe ten eight, ten nine, we defend?
Gotta do ten eight, ten.
Sure.
Ten seven's probably on the fence.
Oh, it's pretty close.
Bottom of the range. So check and I board. He bets call or raise? I think raising here is pretty good.
Oh, I don't think we can call. He, he's got all the better tens. Plus all over pairs.
Yeah.
Protection, I think.
But you have a, a top pair.
Yeah, raise your bigger top pair. Raise the better top pairs and call the worst top pairs.
Can you really afford enough to raise ten seven?
Yes.
I think if we, we've got jack ten, queen ten, I think we could start raising.
Jack ten, queen ten, easy.
I guess we do have the, the seven, so we are, we have some interaction with like straight.
Like jack ten, you gotta do it. Uh, like ten, ten nine, you gotta do it. Ten eight, you're gonna do it. You right after that, it's ten seven. You know, you can keep some calls, I guess, ten four? What's the worst ten? This is the worst ten, actually.
We have to.
Thirty tens. We have all kinds of suited tens.
We have.
But they, that's the bottom of their offsuit. Opening range is the, the ten, right? And the. King ten, ace ten.
Yeah.
Probably not opening queen ten under the gun. Offsuit.
Jack ten off is now opening.
Jack ten, he's not gonna have, but he's gonna have all the suited.
Okay, so maybe call, but I think we raised a lot here. I know.
They're just tough at twenty five big blinds, right?
Even bigger sometimes.
It's top pair, right?
I think it's probably from protection.
Oh, yeah, for sure.
And, and we're short.
But I guess, yeah, being so short, we probably are fine stacking off the top pair on the flop.
It's like, well, ten five, you start to slow play. Basically.
Okay.
How does, how does, will this go if you're like fifty, I guess, then would be more like a check call?
Yeah. At fifty, I think it tightens, tightens up by, well.
So if you have second pair and you play call, do you consider that slow play?
No.
Okay. But if you have top pair.
Top pairs were protecting our checking range.
Yeah. Slow play, right?
Yeah, okay, just.
There's no thing is slow playing anymore.
Yeah, it's not so good. It's just, uh.
That, well, yeah, yeah, that's why I brought it up. That's how I think about it too, Scotty, is it's just a balance thing, right?
Yeah. Oh, it's fun.
Eat it.
All or just the call?
I don't know, man.
I'll probably folding here in game.
Really? You don't think you can have jack nine here? I don't know. You're probably not wrong to do that, Arnie, but.
That's why, that's why I'm saying like twenty five big blinds. I don't think we really have to defend like in game. I know G T O, we should, but like in game, like. With twenty five bigs, I'm not really ever defending ten seven off very often.
Hmm, because he's, right, because he's, he's calling his jack nine there and not, not raising it to that amount. He's calling it or jamming.
Right now, he's, in my opinion, he's either got like. A better talk, he's got a pair of tens that's better than us, or he's got like jacks.
Yeah.
Right? And he's expecting us right now that we're gonna have a ten and he's, we're gonna stack off, right?
And this guy doesn't block?
I think he's gonna show us jacks or queens right here.
This is the guy in the whole world we can like sheen plans calling against.
Alright, Louis, let's, let's.
Let's just throw it in his face.
Let's go through the exercise. What do you think his bluffs are? Name some like logical bluffs that he has here.
A ton.
Is that a, is a ton? Is that a suited combo, a suited ton or?
You think he's bluffing here with like queen jacks of spades, queen jack of hearts, queen jack of diamonds?
Yeah.
The back door.
You think he's raising those? Why would he not just call those?
Yeah. Team gated in this one. From Marco.
I don't think he's doing this with ace king. Ace queen.
I think, I, I mean, you're obviously supposed to call here. You don't get to just fold it.
Yeah.
But um, I am kind of on like. Team call and evaluate. Like if we get a brick on the turn and he jams, I might just let it go.
Okay, but you, so you don't jam here.
I don't think so. Uh, I think you are. Never getting folds, so that's not good. You're never getting calls from worse, so that's not good. I just, uh, I feel like jamming accomplishes like basically nilch.
Yeah, we're about twenty percent fold.
It's actually folding some. It's actually folding some.
And it's still jamming more than it costs.
Now, when you look at this range, it's gonna just be like. It's gonna be bad news, man. Like, look at this. Okay, we're hoping he's got that, that, that Easter Sunday queen jack offsuit. But besides that, there's a king jack suited also, but that's, that's it.
So he, he probably has a very strong ten or. Over pairs or something polar, right?
Yeah, got, gotcha.
And his polar stuff, his polar stuff has a lot of equity. And he doesn't do it with jack nine.
Yeah, like Alan said, there's nothing. So even the solver doesn't laugh here.
Right, so if the solver's not doing it, uh, Joe Schwell and your eight dollar tournament is.
You are torturing.
So Arnie with the four D chess move, just, uh. Avoid it, avoid the damage.
Yeah.
Yeah. I don't know. I usually tighten up.
Oh, he's. It's a, it's an, it's an Easter miracle.
Now, what's the?
What's up with these Easter colors now?
Uh.
Looking at strategy?
No, I'm working on it, Arnie.
Why are we, why are we dunk jamming the turn? If we're not, if we're not.
Because it's.
It's a brick two, right?
Uh. The bottom card pairs were in the big line. We don't care anymore. We just put it in.
Then why didn't we jam on the, then why didn't we jam on the flop?
Because. On the flop. It's like you have the opportunity. When the deuce pair, the, the opportunity goes back to our range. And then you wanna do it with top pairs and deuces.
I think maybe the, I think maybe the answer is like some of the bluffs, you may not be giving the right price to like just call it off. Maybe they're like actually folding sometimes, so you truly are isolating against better. But I mean, I don't know. If you're raising queen jack there to fold versus jam. Seems kinda crazy to me.
Oh, it's another of these five fours that just go, I notice this a lot, the five fours go crazy if they've got the backdoor flush draw. And three to a straight.
Well, you actually have a gutty, so a two gives, no, you don't. Uh, yeah, you need a two, three or seven, six or seven, eight, but.
And the tree is like an K card here, cuz it gives the upper end and the, the bottom.
Yeah, it's kinda crazy to me though, to be quite honest, like under the gun, I just don't, I, I don't think I'm ever finding. Raises on dry ace high, just because they have so many more aces than we do, I, I would imagine.
Yeah, and it's raising big.
Yeah, I guess you just have to really work hard to convince that, uh, that king jack suited to fold.
This guy's laughing right now. He has like ace king or pocket nine. Oh. We have them.
Got king queen.
Soler really likes those five four suited.
Calling ambulance. But not for.
But not for me.
Don't fold.
Never.
Check.
Never fall, huh?
Check call this nonsense.
I'm probably, I'm, I'm probably folding here.
Oh, bro, you know, no, no, Arnie, don't you dare. Don't you dare.
Gut shot at back door.
Got shot back door?
Don't you dare. Don't you dare.
Do we not hear the, do we not hear the power of one more?
This is a sliver of Christmas here.
Look at it, look at it, double belly.
Now you have, now you have a double.
Have more outs. We can lose more money.
He's gonna, he's gonna, he's gonna bet like eight. Oh, he checks. Wow.
Ooh, ooh, wait, 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 wait. Don't you click that green button yet?
Board the mission, man. This is a nerd.
I have ten high.
What's bro gonna do with like?
It brings bad memories in my subconscious.
What's bro gonna do with like a pair of nines here? Well, you are blocking nines.
What's he gonna do with a pair of tens?
If we check raise the flop or do we call the flop?
If you bluff, you gotta bluff big, man. So I think it's gonna either be check give up or I'm going purple.
Eight point five, eight point five or check, yeah.
Look at the torching. Look at the torching I was suggesting us.
I've been hurt. I've been hurt. Oh, my.
I've been hurt.
Look at how I think.
Just let me go.
Oh, my goodness, just that. Three bet, oh. Three bet.
Call.
No, it's just call, bro. Just call. Don't do anything crazy. Step away from the sun.
Cause I'm too bad here.
Just try, let's see what he does.
You have a queen, you're blocking what you're targeting to fold and it's under the gun. You're unblocking aces and kings.
I, you know, I can't hold myself, right?
Step away from the ledge, man.
Okay.
He has a little slipper.
Look at that.
Hey, maybe he doesn't.
No, you rolled, you rolled a thirty seven. You rolled a thirty sevens. Get away from.
Oh, wait.
This was gonna be perfect.
We're gonna be, we're gonna be losing money here.
What's gonna be perfect?
I. Raise it.
Probably just call in here.
Raise it.
Raise.
If you're gonna raise, don't you raise a little bit bigger?
You're putting it in anyways, raise.
Raise fifty five percent.
Raise game?
Yeah.
You guys know he's not folding a king, right?
Yeah.
And we're not folding queen ten either ever, so get it in.
Can we just not call and then?
I don't think we wanna get blown off this equity. We raise here and he jams.
Whatever, fold them.
We've got, we've got what? Thirty percent equity, thirty five percent equity with open ender?
Just call, man. Wait, where you guys wanna put?
I want to call, but people want to raise.
I raise. I'm never folding this hand, but go ahead. I played different with you guys.
Look at that, look at that raising.
Look at that.
There's a sliver of thirty percent.
I liked, I liked raising small there.
So does it prefer the extra equity of like flush blockers or a flush draw? Like. If you had a suited one, would it prefer raising spades, hearts?
I'm raising spades for sure.
Spades, hearts, diamonds over clubs per se?
I'm raising spades. The spades are amazing.
I was gonna say, is there any reason why spades over anything else here?
See, it wants to protect the extra act. This is the reason that you were raising the offsuit one. This is what I was kind of wondering, so. You wanna protect the extra equity and if you don't have the extra equity, you know, just push your equity. With these combos. Now, what I'm curious about is, okay, so check raise and now make him jam in your face. What do you do with these?
I think we gotta call it off if we raise.
Do you?
Jams.
Yeah, I don't know. Yeah.
Oh, it's folding, folding pure.
So this makes sense because. If you were raised calling, you would prefer the extra equity of the flush draws, but since we're preferring the. The lesser equity without the flush draws, it prob, it's kind of supporting evidence for the fact that maybe you're just folding versus jam. I was thinking like you guys were thinking. I was thinking if you check raise, you gotta call, but it didn't make sense to me that it was preferring. Clubs over the other ones, if that were true.
In my mind, he never folds a king here and the king is a big composition of E P's range.
Oh, for sure. He's not folding a king.
Like you're battling against something that is not gonna fold and then you have a hand that we complete.
Yeah, Danny, that's, that's essentially what I'm saying.
Well, I prefer to call.
Nuts.
We check raise, cuz I feel like if we check, he checks back.
Um, no, I'm checking.
Draw comes in, don't we get some leads?
Uh, it depends how contested the draw is, Joey. It's really converged in his range and your range, so.
This too, too high?
Yeah, the, the, the nut to nut ratio is equal, so not in this scenario.
Oh, what a. Oh, okay, so when it changes the equities.
Correct, 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 correct. There's that.
Just call?
No, 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 no. Clicky, 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 clicky. Call. Arnie is a genius.
Well, wh, why, why, well, he could have, he could have an ace king here.
He's not folding ace king for another six big blinds, is he?
Yeah, he probably not, no. He, who knows? All it knows, we got the nuts and we've got a stacked pot ratio of, of less than one and going to the river. We can just jam on the river.
Yep. Okay, so you wanna play donk jam is what you're saying, Arnie?
I do.
Why? What's wrong?
I'm joking. No, I'm gonna call and I'm gonna check on the, on the, the river too.
I don't hate donk jam. It's just a question. I like check raising because I don't wanna put that to a decision.
Oh, now we have to donk jam.
This is a, this is a donk jam card, I think.
You sure you wanna?
Yeah, cuz he's.
He's, he doesn't have any tens.
If he's got a set of kings, he's just gonna check back now. If he's got a set of jacks, he's just checking back. So I think you. If he's got a set of kings, he's just gonna check back now, if he's got a set of jacks, he's just checking back, so I think you gotta put it in his face.
Not convinced here, not convinced at all.
Stupid card.
I think it's, it's gonna still get us to check, yeah, solver's getting us to check all day here with the nuts.
Hey, man, you take, you take your eighteen point eight eight and I'll take my eighteen point eight five and, uh, we'll have a nice day, okay?
Solver loves checking the nuts.
I like, I like betting good hands, but that's.
What, he jams the ace four?
Need to keep some.
That's what the solver did, yeah, that's what the solver was looking for.
Nobody's in game is bluffing the ace four there, I don't think.
There you go, Arnie.
That's why we gotta, we gotta click, click the turn and then he.
There you go, Arnie, now you're, you're, you're thinking about it.
The, the solver is making me a different person and I don't like it.
Galen, I agree, the thing you were talking about, the King Queen, the Queen ten, the difference between the suited and the offsuit and the difference in the clubs and the spades. I think you got it exactly right, but I think that we should reverse the argument. And it's not, it's. It isn't that we are. Uh, because the solver is going to fold, it doesn't raise. It's, it's the other way around.
Folded.
Or the way you said it.
You just pulled it.
Yeah. I'm saying something very uninteresting in a very complicated way.
It resonates with me, Scotty, I know what you mean.
You know what I, you know what I meant.
Cuz I, I do the same thing.
Yeah.
Ooh, this is an interesting one.
Do we three bet this?
You have the extra equity of the straight draw.
Man, I'm, I'm probably. I'm probably making it five.
Louis, what do you wanna do?
So it doesn't connect really great with it, it connects a little bit, but it's not gonna be like, uh. Like whatever he has, this is a very dynamic, so I think we can raise.
Yeah, low, 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 low jack, two tone is definitely like. Our board, I think typically. It should push his sizings to polar, so this is kind of a weird size for, like, I, I think a lot of his range is actually.
If he has a jack, he's betting it big.
Yeah, like he's got some like naked. Queen high stuff here, that's just actually kinda going bananas, I think, maybe the flush draw brings it down a little bit, but I do like check raising, I think. Maybe you call, Danny, I don't, I, I, I don't hate it, but I think with the extra equity, maybe we just kinda start pushing it.
We don't have much bluff here, so we need this one.
We just have a lot of first implied odds here.
From James top, yes, when there's, when you're big blind, there's one. Over two littles and two to a flush is the perfect one to raise.
Yeah.
Raise the shit out of those, normally it's with the king or queen, but that's okay, this one still works.
What are we doing to it, what are we doing to a, to a jam?
You got enough to call, I think, is, yeah, this, you have the straight draw and the, and the flush draw, so you probably are calling.
You are.
Probably, I.
But he folded Ace King too, wow.
It's kind of interesting, maybe you, maybe you should take a look. I would call.
It's way too much to not call.
Give him the, you gave him the little one, not give him like the pile in your face.
Yeah, like forty group, forty eight percent.
Give him the queens, he's got queens, are we calling? Yeah, we're calling. He's got pocket queens, we call.
Some folds. Oh, no, no folds.
Five point nine six, it's actually like printing, that's like a lot.
What's the exact equity, like fifty percent, right? How do you look that up?
It's massive.
You have to count combos, right?
Fifty percent equity, fifty one, forty eight, right?
Uh, forty, forty eight, forty eight, seventy, fifty, yeah, it's huge.
Yeah. You know.
It's huge.
Forty eight point seven, okay.
Against anything, right? King six.
I think we could fold this versus under the gun.
Arnie, do you wanna tree bet?
Bro, you don't do, actually, I can't say.
King takes some big line versus under the gun?
I like what you're doing versus like lay position, but are you, are you, are you really?
Playing with fire here.
Would you rather like tree bet this one or King Queen?
Nah, I would rather, if I was gonna bluff here, it's like Ace five offsuit.
Maybe I'm pushing my luck, I tried to get better kings to fold here.
King five, King six, maybe.
Too shallow for those, I think, Roger.
Oh, look at this.
Yeah.
What's the ra, what's, what's the range look like, by the way, uh, just, just out of?
I think, I think we're folding King four off, but we're calling King five, King six.
Curious what we should raise here.
Cuz I saw the strategy. Right next to it. If you go back to the, the, the board there, you can just open up the strategy. The, the light bulb. Just click the light bulb, top right of the screen.
Just needed to do it here, cuz it didn't like the load.
Think you're just trying to look at the post flop stuff is why it's kinda weird. You said reports. There you go. Yeah, so, I mean, you, you got vapors, okay, so you're not crazy, Louis, pulling from these kings, you're not crazy. It's as popular as these little aces, so.
Smaller, right? This here and this here and then this here and this here.
You could probably even get away with more if you just use a little bit smaller sizing than seven, five, which I think is fine in game, probably when you're. Raising. Yeah, twenty five effective or something? Yeah, you can probably go smaller.
So there's a cross here.
And then it's even better, yeah, I think it's good.
So if you're gonna tree bet. Think you need to see that.
So. We have a very vulnerable top pair. Um, do you ever put this in a checking range? I know you do this with aces sometimes.
I'll think we check.
I check.
I bet.
Well, I'll tell you what, it's a flush draw board, right? So we might have more checks than the usual.
It's a very converged and condensed. Flush draw board around his calling range, so his bluff, bluffs will be, uh, pretty prominent here. I don't know, I, I, I like really small, I think I like really smaller check.
I check.
Well, I think, I don't know, through betting this free flop, we got top pair, S B R one, I think we're just going with it, so I think we should probably bet twenty five percent.
Yeah, I don't know.
And just start, I don't think we could fold top pair here. So I think bet twenty five to start getting some more money in.
Well, just because we can't fold, it doesn't necessarily. Mean that we have to be ones pushing the money in, because if we let under the gun put, push the money in, his range is much wider.
Yeah, but we check here, you know, he's probably just checking behind.
Well, we got an S P R one, so we can.
So, yeah, look at, so if you look at these bluffs that you kind of, uh, have chose to three bet, there are. Really small bets and checks.
Notice how we don't three bet any suited hand, so who comes the flush, uh?
Yeah, the flush is actually completely inconsequential to this range for those reasons. So really small, four, three, uh, you just call now.
And it was to Pink Queen, but doesn't matter.
He did Ace Queen.
Have the nuts.
Let's go.
I was surprised, he, he didn't jam Ace Queen three.
I was gonna say Jack seven's probably like the floor, like, I don't know, you might be able to get away from it.
Hundred percent the floor.
Check. Check call.
Uh, do you raise?
It's probably not crazy, you got a card above the second pair.
It's like the worst jack in the offsuit, but in the suited one, it's pretty good, right? You call Jack five or well, the six and the three, would you rather raise Jack five, Jack seven?
Hmm, I don't know, those are good considerations, I think this. I s, I think the three and the six and how the seven interacts with those actually makes me wanna check raise a little more now.
Maybe I raise more Jack seven and less Jack five, but Jack five's too strong here, can make a straight.
Maybe, maybe that's a good observation.
Okay, so raising a lot here. Then I had like Jack five.
Yeah, look at the composition. So, yeah, you, you nailed it, Louis, the, the five, the three, the, well, three's a two pair, but the Jack deuce. And then Jack eight, so Jack eight doesn't have the additional equity of blocking straight, so it's pretty protective. But like that Jack seven off, for instance, it's just kinda like. It's the one, right?
Yeah.
You're blocking, he's gonna continue with five, four here a lot and you're blocking, you know. A substantial amount of his outs.
Yeah.
Well, he opened under the gun, never mind, he shouldn't have five, four. He's five. I don't know. Call.
Oh, boy. Oh.
Too big, you just call.
Just call.
Yeah, call.
What do you do on like a seven?
Uh, what do you mean a seven?
If a seven on the, if you get like the seven of diamonds on the turn, what are you doing? You just check, donk?
Check fold?
Check fold, you gotta open ender. Bro.
Yeah, you're right.
Alright, now you can fold.
Sorry.
Try again, oh, it donks, it donks.
Like the ace guns, he has less aces, we're like, oh, well, about some shenanigans here. And then he can't really raise, right?
Uh, unless he has the ace.
Oh, look at this.
Oh, man, he even gave you like this, yeah, dude, this is like, I don't know, he's got.
This is the perfect price for a flush draw, does he have ace eight?
He's got Ace Jack here.
He has Ace nine or Ace eight, no?
Or you could dispel shenanigans and still be raising like Kings, Queens.
I'd be calling my house.
He's giving us twenty percent par odds, the hand comes in. What, twenty percent?
Already passed late registration?
Twenty five bigs, I don't know what happened, Arnie, I think, uh.
I think we have.
Or. We're very.
Called seven here, we got eight left.
We don't draw to the nuts, right, our hand is kind of, maybe we fold. No.
Oh.
Well, that was a great way to play most of our stack, now what? Open jam? Or no?
I don't hate it, but I think we just check fold.
We just, uh, lose it. Oh, he snaps us off with Ace King, surprise.
What a lovely Easter miracle.
Yeah.
Call.
What are we waiting for, call? This is I C M?
No.
Just, uh, big blind defense, twenty five.
Ooh.
He big bet.
You can't fold.
I think it mixes folds, like it's that close towards the hand kinda sucks.
Fold, no spade. Look at these guys, a bunch of G T O wizards, they probably got it perfectly right.
Queen eight. I think we're calling, it's gonna be a call on G T O.
Uh, I think they.
Probably the floor.
It goes down to Queen six, it's disgusting.
Yeah, Queen, the Queen and the eight can make a straight also, I think it's just calling chippy bees.
And you tree bet.
Uh, that's a little brave for my, uh, my taste.
You need a king here, hey?
I'm kinda with Nick on that one, I don't really like having a queen cuz you're kinda blocking folds.
I have a queen.
Alright, I'll give you five percent.
Oh, almost twelve percent, wow, twelve percent.
Look at this.
You are a queen, how dare you?
Thank you.
I guess as the, as we get shorter stacked, we can be more aggressive, I guess, right?
It's just polar.
Cuz, cuz we're never, we're never three betting the Queen eight sixty, sixty deep.
No.
No, you're not.
We might even be folding that. I think this is just a fold. Snap fold. This one, I think is a better three bet. Probably three bet like thirty percent. I just want to call.
More like a.
Is this had too good to three bet though, right?
King five here, King four, King three.
On the offsuit branch?
Yeah.
No, I'm doing that like versus the button, not versus early position. The session's blown my mind how much we're three betting in the big blind at twenty five.
Think it's a thing, but not that much.
Yeah, I, I don't think we're ever three betting the low King X though.
Oh, we are.
Can we pull it up? I'm dumb. Yeah, that's, that's what's blowing my mind so much, this, this session is. I'm just folding.
Well, maybe not King five, but King six, King seven, King four, King three. You know, Ace five, Queen five.
Mixing everything so heavy. Like five to ten percent of everything.
Yeah, but it's just polar. So.
I think we're just calling. No, we don't need to check raise this one.
Why not?
But the, we've got the nuts. So let them keep piling. Well, do we ever wanna bluff? I don't think the G, G, I don't think we're ever raising this G T O wizard. I think this is a call hundred percent.
Zero raise?
So I think it's gonna be quite low.
It has to be mixing.
Our range, do you think our range has any raises?
I'm sure we have raises.
Uh, we do have raises in our range, but this particular combo, I think we're calling a hundred percent. Our range has raises, this is a raise.
About, this is a raise and our range has raises.
Like King eight is gonna be your call, like King ten is gonna. Yeah.
We mix every single two pair. Cuz we're getting too short, so two pairs getting mixed up.
I think this is a high frequency click. Like seventy percent click.
Let's see.
Same E V either way, probably, no.
Close to Navy, yeah.
And he, and he folds, right?
Let's take a look at that one.
Thing, right? We've got. It doesn't matter though, like, because you, do you wanna have bluffs? Well, obviously we wanna have some bluffs, but we've got the nuts, we've got twenty five big blinds, we wanna let him. Pile, right? You can't, if you wanna raise your bluffs, you have to raise your good hands, you can't only raise your bluffs. Oh, I, I, I realize that too, right, but we've got, we've got the nuts, right, he, he bet half pot on the flop. Right? It's just an easy check call, check. And then go from there, right, so.
All the Kings.
Then you'll have more bluffs in your check raise range than value hands. It's all about balance, so that no matter what they do, they kind of are miserable, or like. You know, it doesn't matter if they call or fold, because if you play a balanced range, then you're protected either way. Yeah, deeper stacked, that, that's a check raise for me a hundred percent, but like, we're twenty five bigs effective, right? So.
On this one?
Cuz that's, cuz when we check raise there and he folds, it's, it's a terrible, it's just terrible for us, right? But you're only thinking about this particular hand, well, what about when we check raise with nine, seven and he folds? Yeah, that, that's, that's a win for us too, right, but we don't have nine, seven. We check raise our bluffs, but not our value hands? No, I, I'm just saying, we, we've got the nuts, we wanna get a stack, right, that's the best way of getting a stack, right, like, check calling with two pair. Games under the gun. Right? I feel like what I'm saying isn't getting through, so I think we can move on. No, I get what you're saying, but. At, at that step up, we want to maximize. At, at that stack up, we want to maximize our value, right, so we don't necessarily have to play about balanced, right?
I try to always say balance unless I have a raid.
The point is, we have other two pairs that we can raise, Nick, we can, we actually prefer raising king eight and ten eight there, so we can have.
No, we don't. That, that, the, this was, this violates the heuristic again. The ten eight does it a hundred percent of the time, the king eight does not do it more than the king ten. I mean, the king ten.
Look at suited, look at suited.
He's supposed to do it less than the king ten, that's the, that's the heuristic that we've learned, and it's not true in this one.
Yes, because of stack depth, you know, because we're twenty-five big blinds, uh, like the importance of like two pair is, it goes up a little bit. So you want, it seems like you want to have some slow plays, like top two. Without the backdoor flush. That seemed to be the, the component, is gonna check and call them off.
It becomes like too strong to raise.
The mathematical reason to.
But it was still raising six, it was still raising sixty percent of the time, the hand we had.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
The reason that it does have some checks is not to be tricky, but to protect our checking range, to have something really strong in our checking range.
Yeah.
Yes. Which is also the same reason, reason we raised, have really strong hands and a raising range.
Yeah, fold here.
Yep.
So was it, it, are, are we thinking that the top bottom heuristic goes away at twenty-five and lower?
No. And then you, you get to raise more like. More hands, simple as that.
It could be a function of, um, the under the gun one range, too.
I mean, it's definitely a better raise, because you're willing to stack off pretty much, no matter what happens, and you're not blocking him for having a king. So.
No, that's, that's, that's bottom two. So, the, the old heuristic was of the.
Oh, top and bottom.
Pairs we have, the top bottom is the one that checks, that, that protects the checking range most. Top two bets the most, bottom two bets a lot, and then top bottom bets the least of the three.
Still two, still two, it depends, just depends on stack depth.
Right, so as I'm saying is, is it twenty-five and below where we think that that goes away? And bigger, we think it stays.
Yeah, exactly.
Cool, thank you.
Just to fold?
Yes.
Yet, none, no.
Not even close. Three bet. Apparently.
I hate that.
Like five percent.
Yeah, five percent slivers.
Slivers. We bet this guy. Hit the game, and blast it off.
How do you keep hitting your king, you luck box?
Smash his top two.
King six, you want to hit the kings, and then the six.
Oh, okay.
Oh, we bet six.
Well, I guess he could have, yeah, there he has, still has some draws.
We're betting six on the six.
I like it.
It does have some draws.
I, I think we should have bet six point six six, so I think.
Yeah, which is better.
Yeah, there's always, yeah.
He shouldn't have ace ten.
Lose to king queen.
Beat queen jack, oh, there you go.
It was a slur, but I don't know, I don't think, I don't think I'm ever doing that in game.
You call here?
I'm never doing that in game.
You ever jam?
Is there any jamming?
Not with this hand, I think we need to get to like.
Would be at eights?
Sevens or eights, it'll start jamming.
Probably, not too bad.
I'm pretty sure.
I feel like I've seen this one jam, but.
I'd be surprised.
I would call in game.
Like, okay.
We're so sure.
Yeah.
You're sure.
Every, every, every flop, there's gonna be overcards.
Bro, he's like, he's not even opening fives, and we're gonna jam fours.
In his face, so he folds fours.
Jack. Trying to get him off eights.
No, fives.
He's not opening fives.
Six.
Alright.
Alright, there it is, the bottom. This is where we get that sticky spot where we should probably call, but I want to fold.
We have to call, we have.
I think we have to call with just the jack, and we've got a spade.
Yep.
Marginal hand. Oh, whoa.
I'd rather, I'd rather check raise this.
Everyone got scanned here.
That was like a team punt.
Team fun, scan, look at the size.
A big bet.
It is a big bet.
Yeah, but we have a pair with double backdoors, I don't know. Our range is gonna struggle.
What if he just goes like, uh, he chills?
He just, just small sizing?
Chills, we can peel. If he chills a little less. We're still peeling, let's start to mix. But.
It is kind of deceiving, though.
It is really the sizing that makes it so we can't call.
Yeah, it's like kind of deceiving, because you think about three fifteen into a pot of five. It is just very small looking number, but it's not, it's like three quarters.
It's a big bet.
Yeah, it's a big bet.
Do you want to jam here?
I have no, I have no qualms with it, in game, I'm probably not doing it against a solver, maybe.
I don't like it with jack ten, um, I like, like, ten queen suited, king ten suited, but jack ten, I think I'm just calling.
I'd probably jam this versus like button cutoff.
Blocking the bottom.
Not under the gun.
I think it's like a leak of mine, but I'm doing a lot of suited tens there.
Don't we just call them all and do this like in the small blind?
No.
Not a lot of suited tens do do it, but I think not jack ten, I could be wrong.
King, jack suited, you jam here, queen, jack, you jam here, and this one is probably mixing.
I, I think, uh, from the small blind, your range actually has to be tighter to be shoving, no?
I think it's in there. Yeah, I think like king, jack and king ten are like pure though, and queen jack is a lot.
Can you look at the range?
Yeah, because it's not only under the gun, right?
Missing some of those.
It's also under the gun one we're playing against.
Yeah.
It's pretty rare. Fours again.
Yeah, but this time it's a, it's a spot down.
It's the island.
Yeah.
Ooh, gotcha, small bet.
Just calling us all day?
Yeah, all day.
A little bit of raising.
It wants it to min click. Okay.
Leading on the five here. Okay, well, I'm missing some of these, oh.
I don't understand.
I'm just folding, right?
I'm out of the way.
Yeah, snap fold, yeah. Just top set, no big deal.
The bottom. The lead.
Uh.
Perfect lead.
I don't think, versus under the gun.
I think the bottom card has to be a three or four to lead.
I agree.
We have like any leads versus under the gun? I mean, I know we have some, but like.
We do. We need, as, uh, connected board with a flush draw.
And even without.
One, as Joey said, might not be connected enough, and I think he's.
Did you, did you look at the range breakdown already in the session?
A little bit, yes.
But I know we have leads versus the button, but a lot of these versus under the gun spots I looked at, we weren't really leading the same boards that we would versus late position.
We were, we, we, we were leading a lot of the connected boards.
Okay.
Um, this one's. All the way up to the eights.
Even some eight. And then there's three, there's no deuce though, no deuce, oh, the, no, you might have, oh, I mean. So we can't do it, I was gonna do it and get scanned. Can't, can't do it on a deuce.
You gotta do it somewhere, deuce.
No.
Alright.
What the deuce?
You do not.
This board. Look at it.
Uh, you might.
No, that's what I said, there's a little bit, but there's more, when you get the, the six, five, four, six, five, three, there's gonna be more than this.
You need more than just a seven, you need a backdoor flush.
Right, the Jack seven doesn't do it alone. Need three to a three to a.
Oh, my goodness. Oh.
What a jerk.
Oh, I was folding to a small bet, just fold.
Uh, three bet, eight percent of the time, three, damn it.
It's like king six, not king nine.
I mean, they were all mixing slivers.
Yeah.
So it's all about just trying to get the right frequencies.
Want a frequency raise this?
King ten, king queen, king jack.
I don't know, I think we should probably just call.
I think we're raising.
You're way too passive on your top pair at this SPR, you gotta stop that.
I think raising like seventy percent of the time, calling thirty.
Louis, where do you think the cutoff is on? Like around?
He five suited and lower, we call?
No, I mean.
King six, make it king six, since we're missing king deuce, because we're gonna raise king deuce, gonna be king six, king five, king four, king three.
That will be the calls.
So I'm guessing here, but yes.
Is the last, is the top of the calls.
I think king seven's gonna mix pretty heavily.
Yeah, I don't think you can call, you can, uh, call with king sevens too.
Look at it, look at all that calling.
Mixes very heavily.
Look at the offsuit, think it's better represented.
Look at it, look at all that calling, the king seven offsuit.
Mixes very heavily.
Yeah. Either way, right? As long as you know you're supposed to raise a lot, I think it's good.
On those lower kings, is there any suit arrangement that it's preferring, because it does have a little bit?
It had a huge difference in the offsuit branch, uh, that I was interested in.
You want the clubs or diamonds?
Yeah, something like that.
Yep.
It's looking like hearts.
That's definitely clubs.
Yeah.
I hear the seven, seven of clubs.
Seven of.
Yeah, yeah.
King of clubs.
Yeah, clubs. That's the thing, clubs are written all the bigger ones.
Yeah. And then also clubs here, right?
It's because you're unblocking all the, uh, like backdoor flush draw continues.
You're, you're unblocking the folds?
You're unblocking the calls.
You're unblocking the calls that have low, that have, that have low equity.
Yeah. What does that do for you?
It means that when he call, when he calls, he calls weak, that, that in his calling range are more weak hands.
Yeah, you get more value.
Or if you go back one step further, maybe he's just checking like the king five suited, king four suited, something like that.
Cause in my mind, we raise the clubs more, because he has. When you have club, he has more of the other ones, and when you have more of the other one, he can call more often.
Right. We, we unblock his low equity calls.
We're unblock his folds, basically.
No, his.
We block his folds, precisely.
We block his value, because he's gonna bet clubs the most.
Alright, what about here, what happened, we check raise, darn is this, we got a barrel.
Uh, I think we range bet small. Such a good card for our check raise range.
Small? Wow, look at this.
Paul.
Raise again?
I think it's just a call.
Double check raise, one of the last, double check raise somebody.
It's just a call now, Louis.
Oh.
Oh, it likes to pile, that's weird.
Some, yeah.
You could do it, but.
I.
Check call.
I think it's just a check call again.
Check jam?
Check call.
Oh, my goodness, I just.
I was gonna consider folding.
I would never consider folding.
How you fold top pair without ICM?
How is he bluffing?
With those stacks.
What, I mean, I don't think he's ever bluffing here.
Hey, so having a diamond is bad.
Like ten nine, we block it.
Having a nine, it seems to be good to me, right?
Hmm, I think a lot of his bluffs have a nine, don't they?
They, okay, so it must be, right, the diamond is bad, the nine is probably bad. Cause you don't fold many kings here in my mind, in my mind.
We block ace nine, we block ten nine.
We block, we block Jack nine.
Do you fold many kings there?
I don't think I fold any kings.
Not many, or you fold some, the bad ones.
The bad ones.
So a six is really bad here, a seven and eight. And then a nine, so that's the bad cards, why?
Does it change?
Hang over the king nine, Louis, hang over the king nine offsuit, we gotta look at the suits.
I was gonna say, does it change the suit, if you don't have a diamond?
Spade, if you have a spade in your hand, no, yeah, spades, you fold.
It's a.
Well, it's looking like a lot of them are clubs, but then the king hearts, nine of diamonds just sticks out like a sore thumb.
If you have the. Nine of spade or nine of heart, you fold.
What? I don't, that I don't understand. Cause what are the? What are the parameters around that?
Then recalling with the clubs and the dying. Nine.
Why is it like the clubs better than the spade and the?
Because with clubs, you block the folds.
Oh, I see. I think that's a little too big brain for me right now, but.
What, what was the flop? What were the suits?
King, Jack, deuce.
So.
Clubs unblock his floats that can bluff.
We can see why the diamond is bad here.
If, but if we unblock his floats that can bluff, shouldn't we be calling and in the, and it was the opposite, right? That was what we were.
We don't, we don't have the clubs.
Okay, dude, I gotta roll over that again, we call when we.
We want to have clubs, but we don't have them here.
Right, right, whenever we have a club, when we have a club, we call.
Is it that we want clubs or that we?
The king clubs full.
So we don't want spades and hearts.
We don't want.
Nine of hearts.
I don't know, this is two in the weeds.
Yeah, this is really, this is really in there, um.
It's the nine of spade and the nine of heart.
Yeah, but. But I understand that part.
Specific combos that he's floating and not bluffing that we want him to have, right?
Yeah.
If we look at his range, it might help clarify.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
There's jam?
On, for his, oh, for his jamming range, yeah, this actually makes more sense now to look at it in reverse.
Yeah, so ten nine, what suits in like, uh?
Oh, okay, so.
Suits, but less frequency of clubs.
So I guess, did we want to have a diamond, because ten nine of diamonds doesn't exist.
And then pocket nine. Pocket nine, but not with the club.
Like, I don't, the club is doing. I don't think we want a diamond, Danny. Like, pretty sure we don't want a diamond.
Calling with the king of diamond, which.
Depends.
Surprises me, right?
You're, you're blocking a lot of the bluffs when you have a diamond in your hand.
Nine of diamonds, nine of diamonds, both of the nine of diamonds call. No, you, you don't block ten nine of diamonds, because it. No, you you don't block ten nine of diamonds, because it it's blocked by the board.
Yeah, it's blocked by the board.
Yeah, so that's why it's it's okay to have that one.
Oh, okay. I now I get it because you want him to have the other diamond combos, right? That that aren't on the board because you blocked nine.
Yeah, and then he'll bluff with the ten nine of hearts, clubs, spades.
Gotcha.
So it's worse to have those those particular nine X.
And that's why you can call with the nine, that's why you can call with the nine of diamonds in that spot. I mean, I'm sorry, the nine of spades in that spot. Because you uh. Cause you're unblocking his uh bluffs as well. That that makes sense.
I thought we folded the nine of spades.
I'm I'm sorry. I meant to say clubs. My bad.
Thank you.
Okay, okay, okay.
Alright, clubs, yeah, clubs, my. Yeah, we fold the nine of spades.
Yeah.
Anytime board.
I'm happy to have gotten that one wrong.
Can we leave?
I think this is a check.
Put the spade in your hand.
Three. Put a spade in your hand. Needs to be a five.
Put a spade in your hand and and you can. No, it's not. This isn't connected enough.
So with a spade?
Nope, it's not connected enough.
Not leading enough.
You need, you need. There has to be a straight. We we have to have a straight available that we have.
Four five doesn't, yeah.
Yep.
Yeah.
Straight draws in enough.
Okay.
And he bets large on those stupid boards. Just fold.
I think we just fold here.
Just fold it. Just fold it.
It's it's like a point one.
The the only one you fold is three two off.
How about folding one two?
Alright. Check and something.
No, no, not folding. We have a. A pair.
Do you raise or call?
I think both are fine. Majority call thirty percent raise. What do you say?
Fifteen percent raise.
I'm on board with you, Louis.
No, I'm I think.
Ooh, about zero percent raise. It's an inside board against CP.
We have marginal made hand.
Yeah.
We have some equity. We don't need to raise this.
Four deuce? Do we raise four deuce?
No, it's the same. Same thing.
Can I escape this?
We have to raise something, right?
If we need the backdoor flush?
Are we so shallow where it doesn't change too much? I guess it could still be good to have.
Yeah, we turn into a bluff.
Three of hearts.
Turn it into something. Like.
Turn a marginal made hand into a bluff.
Throw some chips in your opponent's face.
Trying to make him fold a jack.
Yeah, a ten. I don't think he can fold a jack, right?
He's in a tough spot with a jack.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not, it's not, it's not.
I don't think he's in a tough spot, but if he has like pocket seven.
That, yeah.
Well, that's, yeah, that's folding, right?
Yeah. So it's more like sevens, eights, nines.
I think a jack is closer than you think.
I wouldn't, I think he calls every ace, every jack and sometimes. But anything under a ten has to fold if we do that.
What's what about? What about like uh queen nine?
So we know, we'll be in this spot as the aggressor. We need to know what to call. Queen nine?
Yeah, queen nine. No, you can't. You can't call with queen nine because you're you're blocking all of his bluffs.
Okay, what happened? Bet six and then? This is his calling. Every jack, so king jacks indifferent.
King ten is folding.
Queen jack folds.
Queen jack suited folds, queen jack off.
Oh, calls.
Mainly calls, yeah.
That's weird.
That is weird. Oh, it. I I see why. I think I know why. Is the board is a is a double pair? No, it's not double paired. It's. Does it weigh? Is it rainbow?
We have to look at the suits again.
Wait, if they're calling with jacks, why are queens folding?
Uh because you block the you block the bluffs, I think. If you have a queen.
Yeah, and having a jack blocks two pair.
Mm-hmm.
It's twofold.
So the suits?
I don't, I don't think I'd fold king, pocket kings and pocket queens here.
Yeah, I don't know if I would.
Gotta be disciplined. Gotta be disciplined. There's too many aces who are betting. Simple as that.
Yeah.
Under the gun, bet he's see betting range. After that turn goes check, check, you're out of position. You gotta you gotta block bet every ace on the book, no?
Yeah.
So there's just too many aces for you to call kings or queens. You gotta be disciplined.
Yeah, but you're calling jacks and tens.
Jacks? No, tens, you're you're bluffing.
No, no, queen jack is calling.
But then you block jack three.
Louis, tens is a set.
Jack three and jack deuce.
Yeah.
A jack ten is two pair.
Right, the queen jack and the queen jack that calls. Also blocks the king queen and the queen queen. So it does. It also does too. That's stupid. Okay, the solver is wrong.
The solver is wrong.
I mean. When I look at this, I'm seeing that.
It's super suit defended.
The other, the villain in this hand, or who we were. Is probably bluffing a lot of kings and queens.
You wanna black pocket jacks? I think that's the only explanation.
It's just queen jack with a spade?
Pocket king doesn't block any pockets, any sets. Whereas king jack, queen jack blocks pocket jack. That's it.
Right, the queen jack suited.
Yeah, that's.
Oh, we just never have it.
The queen is bad.
Oh wait.
But I mean, against population.
Jack nine is better.
Probably better off folding, right? These uh these jacks?
No.
Yeah.
I don't know if he'll do great. We call top.
You gotta call sometimes, man.
Sometimes, yeah, some people.
Yeah, 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 fair.
If I mark on him, it's easier.
Louis, would you, Louis, would you go back to that board one more time and just do it proportional to weight? Let's see what, maybe maybe we just never have the queens and stuff like that.
Yeah, but we have the kings some, a little like.
Not that often.
Yeah, the kings mix. And the queen jack different. Oh, we just never have queen jack suited. That's why, that's why.
Oh, queen jack would be, we'd be jamming that free.
Right, we just don't have it, and so that's nonsense. Okay.
Okay, yeah, I was wondering why that folds there and that, yeah, that's the scenario. Okay.
Right.
Just a fold. Do you raise a jack or spade?
Louis, we overfold ace high on the flop.
Guess for three betting. You wanna do your thing?
I he loves doing this. I don't know why.
Wasn't this the pure call one, though? Yeah, it was the pure call to.
It is pure call against this guy, but against this guy, maybe we can.
Alright.
Oh.
Yeah, no, one percent.
Oh.
You got it. I guess we're blocking his ace five, right? I think that might have a little bit to do with it.
So it's very.
We didn't hit her king.
No, because we didn't three bet.
That's right.
Can't lead here. We have no leads.
Oh.
Still a check.
Check again.
Yeah.
Yeah. He has a lot of kings to dominate ours, right?
Oh my god, what have we done? He's never taking back the flop with a ten, so I think we're good.
I think we're we're uh overbetting here, aren't we? We're going like uh five point five or eight point five here?
It's not gonna be an overbet, for sure. It's a pair of board. You don't have a ten, so it.
He doesn't have a ten either.
He doesn't, but it kills both your action, right?
I I think it's more between four and five point five.
I think it's like two or four. More like two, because you have a weak top pair.
We'd be betting the. Would we be betting the turn with a ten? Or we'll be checking the same way?
Checking.
Okay, so then we could have a ten.
Definitely. I have a bunch of tens. You know, maybe your ten wanna bet four.
Yeah.
But my king five here wanna bet two.
I think. But Louis, with the action, I think king five is stronger. After he checks flop and turn.
I only thought it's like if we bet big, he might call with like ace eight or something like that.
Let's try a bigger bet. Oh, yeah, it's hard.
I like to.
For bad, Arnie.
Ah man, the solvers changed me, man. Playing with the GTO wizard, man.
Arnie, Arnie's the solver man now.
Ah, Arnie.
Right? We overbet like, oh, we're trying to steal it from me. We get some crying calls.
Hmm.
From the solver, not in game. In game, I'm betting two point five there.
Ooh. We can three bet planning here.
Hmm. We don't need much protection here, right?
I think we just call.
Just call.
Just call. Hmm, may, we've got a bunch of aces here. This one is pretty strong.
Check call, check call, check call.
I agree.
What's the, what kicker do you start to raise a race? Think you gotta.
Well, right here, our best ace is gonna be what? Ace. Ten, ace.
Uh ten, yeah.
Ace ten's probably our best ace we have that we're not three betting free.
Ace jack?
Maybe ace jack is our best ace we have right now? That might be used to call pre flop.
Ace nine and then ace eight. So we gotta raise this.
Yeah, I think we probably are raising this one here with the small bet.
And then you raise bigger without the spade in your hand? But with the spade, you go smaller.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Check call, check call, check call. Eighty percent.
Pretty sure I'm with you on that one.
Ace nine, you gotta raise. You say? Oh, it's doing that thing. It makes sense. He wants to raise the worst one to get better aces to fall. Whereas these, you raise ace eight, you accomplish nothing, because he's not folding a better ace.
He's not folding a better ace ever.
If you if you raise ace four, he might fold ace five. Right?
Not on the flop.
No.
So you don't get, you guys don't think he pulled ever an ace here?
No, no.
Not to one bet.
Not to one bet.
We'll see what happens by the river.
I was gonna say, maybe if he double barrel.
I'm I'm, I I don't like the idea of trying to push people off top pair.
Yeah, you guys are right.
Blinds deep.
I had folding top pair.
Louis. Louis.
But I don't know, but you you're on board with check raising two pair, top two.
Oh, yeah. I'm not trying to put him, push him off top pair.
You. You have to, you start the hand with twenty five big blinds and you flop top pair.
Yeah.
What's your first thought? It's like, well, I'm going with this no matter what.
Yeah, for sure.
Yeah.
Yeah.
He has me outkicked, he has me outkicked, so be it. That's what they say. Alright, that's a good card for us. Check call.
You just turned a set of kings?
No.
I guess.
We bet it.
Uh, it's because we check raised the flop.
Oh, we check raised the flop.
Oh, we did raise?
Okay, then I get.
Oh, yeah, I thought we called.
I'll put it back. We just call.
Yeah, now we check call.
Check, no.
Oh, yes, we, most of the time we check.
Yeah, but this doesn't seem like a leading card for us.
Well.
It, but it really helps.
Only with top pairs or what?
Our hand has really improved and.
We 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 chop now too with the aces that are beaten now.
And he's now hit some kings that we beat.
That's probably has to do with it. We chop with all the ace nines, ace tens.
Yeah.
And if he has a pair of kings here, he's probably gonna go with it.
Yeah. He can't, he can't just fold to one bet. But he can check behind.
No, this is an interesting spot.
So when. Check bet, call, check, check.
We gotta bet big.
I agree.
Yeah.
Pretty good top pair.
How big, though?
Five, five or seven. Pretty good top pair with block the flash.
And we're chopping everything else, so.
He wouldn't check very many aces.
I might go one click up. Seven.
Okay.
And fold to a jam.
Yeah. Betting one. Okay.
Betting betting one is a bit spicy, but it's good because you induce a lot. So if you bet one, you gotta buckle up.
Yeah.
Because you're, I mean, you're just calling it off, right? If he shots on you.
And he, he didn't call us with a king.
Yeah.
Interesting.
That's what we wanted to get called by. That's why we bet the turn. We bet the turn into his king.
Yeah.
And he can't fold there before the flush comes in.
Ah, makes sense.
Check.
So we get value from a king before the flush comes. Okay, okay. Gotta call here, right? Uh.
No.
We got a gut shot, um so I think we have to call one for the sizing. No? So wants us to fold pure?
Probably.
Without a spade?
Yeah.
Yeah, if we had a spade, I would say sure.
Take a spade, call, yeah. I guess just call.
The problem, the the problem with calling from that spot is if another spade runs out, we have to fold the turn.
Yeah, yeah, that's true.
So we have a little bit of leading on this, but not a whole lot.
I I don't know if we lead this either, because we're not connected enough, right? It's like extremely coordinated.
Three, five. It has to be three, five.
This, this is.
No, I agree. Three and five's gonna be more leading. But we saw the six, five, two had a little bit of leading.
And then we have a seven here, so maybe.
That they're leading on this board, but not this combo.
I didn't, yeah. I wasn't, sorry, I, there is leading. I just don't think with our hand, yeah.
Yes, I agree.
Oh, no, no, not with our hand.
Ooh, very little leading.
No leading, five, three is two. It's five, three we need here, so it's two.
Yeah, I know. I thought there was still may, maybe ten to fifteen percent with this low.
Alright. I call here.
I think we have to with the ace high.
Yeah, call one. But I just, now I'm gone. I'm out.
Well, thing is.
We get leads.
Great card, alright, yeah.
Yeah, that's a great card to lead. Yeah, that's a great card to lead.
So I think I'm always eating here, if I recognize a spot and that, ooh. Alright, we tried, it didn't work.
Yep. Nice hand.
Checks back a screen.
Seems legit.
Don't think that's gonna happen very much.
No, I don't think so, I.
Is this, is this one of the ones we're jabbing here? King jack, queen jack?
I say yes.
I, I think it's king ten.
King ten?
I think king ten is against under the gun.
Oh, okay.
And this one is this.
So in chippy V, that.
Oh, wow.
Oops.
Does it change if we go to ICM?
Oh, it's a king ten and jack ten.
Never mind, uh.
The king jack's too good.
King ten is in there. With jack ten.
Um, does it change in ICM?
Yes.
Yes.
None of this applies on ICM. A jack, have to call with a jack, right?
Yeah.
I think we might even be raising this one a little bit.
Yeah, I think we get some raises with this hand too.
What do we accomplish by raising?
Uh.
It aces to fold.
That's fair.
It's not gonna be spades, not gonna be hearts, right? So like precisely clubs and, uh, diamonds?
Yeah, but we, but we block those.
We block clubs.
Yeah. So it's diamonds you wanna get to fold.
Yeah.
It's a little bit thin, no? Think you wanna have a spade in your hand to raise here.
Alright, what about if he C bets with a nine or an eight? They're folding.
He's gonna call.
I don't thi- I think he's gonna call, I don't think he can fold a nine or an eight on.
I was actually, this is just a call.
If he has.
Yeah, it's gonna be a call for sure.
If he has a, uh, a, another, like a, a nine, and then like, I don't know, his off card being like a, a spade, I'm pretty sure there's never folding. And I'm pretty sure they're always calling with a, with the eight of spades as well. Like if you raise them. I, I agree with this call, though.
It's disaster for the job, right? Like, you got so much equity.
That's a card we can lead.
We could.
Servants.
A little queen nine here.
Call.
Can we check where it's with the queen's spade? I think so. King I board against AP is not great, right?
Yeah.
Maybe we just fold, we check raise queen five?
I don't know, we, we do have a gut shot.
Two over to the eight?
So I think we still have to peel one, even though I wanna fold.
No, we don't have a gutter, we have a backdoor.
Oh, we've, oh, that's right, we need a jack and a ten.
But we have a spade and two over. Fold?
Folded, yeah.
We're folding I board against AP? Yeah.
It just, that just hits his range way too hard, right?
Yeah. Gonna call?
Yeah.
I sort of wanna lead here.
This is a one, right?
No.
No.
Well, I don't know, I just wanna, I just wanna dock, cause we need some protection.
We just saw six, four.
And we can get some value from his
Yeah, no.
Overcard hands.
Same type of board, we don't get to do it. Even with this hand, which I think is like the
Did it go check, check?
Yeah.
Yeah, it went check, check, and now we have to go check again.
Now we have to check again.
That's gross. I, I hate that.
Yeah, but I say we can check call this next bet.
Yeah, yeah.[1604.28]